From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scribner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 9th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Zach Scribner. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, please stay standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Good morning. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to call on Nick Cullen, Director of the Animal Services Department, to introduce our Pet of the Week.
I got a doozy for you.
Good morning, Nick.
Good morning.
Who do we have here today?
I have with me this morning, her name is Purina. That's correct, Purina. It's a long story, but she's, Purina's about a 10-month-old. She's a terrier mix, she's very interested in what's happening right now. But she's currently available for foster for the right family that can take her home today. She'll be available for permanent adoption on Saturday, and she's going to make somebody a cool family pet. Still a puppy, she's got puppy energy, so she's going to take somebody with a lot of time and dedication.
Awesome. Well, looking forward to hearing the stories. She doesn't even look like she could eat much, Purina, tiny little thing. Well, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If members of the public wish to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. Members of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. Members of the public may also comment on any closed-session items. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers, and that is Items 1 as well as Items 7 through 8 on Page 2, Items 9 through 13 as well as Item 15 on Page 3, 16 through 22 on Page 4, 23 through 29 on Page 5, and lastly, 30 through 36 on Page 6. And I would also like to note that Closed Session Item 39 under County Council has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any members of the board that would like an item removed for discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will abstain from Consent Item Number 10 on this agenda due to a source of income to my spouse. Clerk of the Board, please record my abstention on each of these items, even though I will vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar. My vote will only be for those remaining items. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scribner. Any other board members have any questions?
Motion on consent.
Certainly.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Okay, the board will now hear Item Number 2 proclaiming November 12th as International Kreutzfeldt-Jakob Disease, or CJD Awareness Day in Kern County, and honoring the memory of former City of Bakersfield Mayor Harvey Hall. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion on the proclamation.
Thank you.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm honored to present this today, but I hate the fact that I have to present this today. I think about Harvey Hall a lot, I'm sure most of you do as well, and it just, I think about him at odd times, I think about him when I see somebody do something kind for someone else, I think about him when the City of Bakersfield comes up because he loved the City of Bakersfield, he loved Kern County as well. So, again, I don't like being here today, but I'm honored to present this today. Harvey was taken from us far too soon by a disease called Kreutzfeldt-Jakob Disease, or CJD, and Levon Hall, whom you all know, has kind of picked up the mantle in fundraising and fighting that disease. And of course, I think you turned your event in the first year into the largest event in the country, raising the most money, and I'm sure you're going to continue that tradition because you only do things that way. So I want to read this proclamation, and then turn it over to Levon, who will have some comments. The proclamation states that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 12th, 2021, as International Kreutzfeldt-Jakob Disease Day, oh, excuse me, Awareness Day in Kern County, and honoring the memory of former City of Bakersfield Mayor Harvey Hall. And this recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, it's signed by our Honorable Chair, Philip Peters, and it's dated today, November 9th. So with that, Levon, if you want to say a couple of words, we'd like you to do that.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Peters and members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to bring attention to Kreutzfeldt-Jakob Disease, International CJD Awareness Day, and for honoring the memory of my husband with this proclamation. Your acknowledgement helps to shine the light on this rare fatal brain disease. I am proud and grateful for the work being done locally through Strides for CJD Bakersfield, including the support we have received from Supervisor Couch. Last month, we held our fourth Strides for CJD, the last two have been virtual, and out of over 20 cities across the nation that held this event, Team Big H, in honor of Harvey Hall, was the top fundraiser across the nation out of all the teams participating for four straight years, and also, Bakersfield was the top city for fundraising, and I'm very grateful for that. All of this translates into more funding for research, education, and family assistance, which has been very beneficial for me and others who find themselves searching for answers. Of course, we'll Kreutzfeldt-Jakob Disease is, is a devastating disease. It has no cure, no treatment. It's 100% fatal. Two hours and, two weeks and seven hours after Harvey's diagnosis, he passed away. It happens quickly, there's not much you can do, and you feel very alone. The help of the CJD Foundation is vital to families who continually hear from doctors and medical professionals. We just don't know, we don't know, this is so rare, we just don't know. And so they can find answers and, and help themselves and their families cope with this devastating disease. So I thank you for helping to shine light on this and, and to honor Harvey in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The board will now hear Item Number 3, and that is proclaiming November 2021 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir. Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Hi, Jamie. Good morning, colleagues. We are here today to proclaim November 2021 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County. I am joined by Jamie Stewart, who is the Child and Family Services Coordinator for the Kern County Network for Children, and Anna Lavin, who is with our Homeless Collaborative. And I, we'll hear more from Jamie about who is, who is making up this growing problem of homeless youth in our community, but I am aware that one of the largest growing sectors of youth who are on the street are those who are emancipated youth who have left the foster system, and they have nowhere to go. So there are some efforts underway to help them, to extend their ability to have some support and some help. But, but I'd like to hear much more about that from you, Jamie. So could you come forward here, and I'll, I'll give you this proclamation? It says the Board of Supervisors proclaims, on behalf of the State of California, we officially have proclaimed November 2021 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County, entered into our minutes by the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable Philip Peters, on the 9th day of November. So thank you for what you're doing in this. Please tell us more about it and how the community might be able to help.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggert. I'm grateful to be here today and to have your support and the support of Dr. Lavin and all of our community partners, the Department of Human Services, Behavioral Health, Probation, I could go on and on, California Veterans Assistance Foundation. It takes all of us to address youth homelessness effectively together. And so the Youth Action Board of the Bakersfield Homeless Collaborative created the spotlight that is being shown on the screen. It's in your packets, and it's available on the website with other, the other meeting materials. Being used and homeless is extremely dangerous. Homeless youth need to blend down in order to survive and not be further victimized. So the Youth Action Board members who are comprised of people, youth who have been homeless, created this so that the community can better understand the signs of homelessness, some ways they can effectively engage the youth who might be experiencing homelessness, and some resources that are available to them. So speaking of resources, I'm glad to report that we just concluded the first 12 months of the funding that the county is providing to do outreach for homeless youth. And 67% of those youth of the 108 that we worked with received housing. 52 of them were employed at the time that they exited outreach, which is a feat to be, to be working and homeless. And then once we get them in housing with the funds that the City of Bakersfield is providing for their support, we saw that percentage go up even higher to 64%. More of them are job searching. We have many more homeless youth that are looking for units. So we couldn't be more grateful, and we just received this week notice that our funding from the county and the city is going to continue. And not only continue, but continue at a level that is higher than the minimum that the state requires that these funds be dedicated to youth. So I'm truly grateful your, to your support, and I'm grateful to the community and all of our partner agencies so that we can together make a difference for homeless youth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you ladies.
The board will now hear Item Number 4 proclaiming November and December 2021 as Kern County Cares Can Food Drive Months in Kern County. And I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Presentation. Is there a second? Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have with me today, who I'll be presenting to, Dina Murphy, our Director of the Department of Human Services. During the holiday month of November and December, the Golden Empire Gleaners are requesting the help of Kern County employees to collect non-perishable foods for distribution to the county's most vulnerable people. All donated food and monetary donations will be given to the Gleaners, who will use it in programs throughout Kern County. The Gleaners work tirelessly to alleviate hunger and provide food to approximately 18,000 individuals every month. The generosity of Kern County employees is critical to this important work. With your support and generosity, the Gleaners is confident that they can achieve a combined goal of 100,000 pounds of food. Kern County employees are encouraged to donate non-perishable foods or money. The Gleaners' success depends on these monetary and non-perishable food donations. This worthwhile effort is our county's opportunity to help families in need and make a difference this holiday season. And so it's my honor to present this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November and December 2021 as Kern County Cares Can Food Drive Months in Kern County. This recognition has been entered in our official minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Philip Peters. And I'll present this now to Dina Murphy. Dina, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner, Chairman Peters, and members of the board. I'm very honored to receive this, but all the credit goes to the folks at the Gleaners who work so terribly hard. I'm joined today by Debbie Powers, who is the Executive Director over Gleaners, and Tina Burke, who I'm sure many of you recognize as one of our longtime county employees, who is the Chair of the Board for the Gleaners. It would be an understatement to say that food insecurity is horrific. And so I've, I've been very honored since 2014 to have Human Services lead the effort in the food drive, and the, the food that is collected during this time actually stretches to cover the Gleaners in their food needs from November all the way to February when they start their next campaign. So we are throwing down the gauntlet and challenging ourselves to reach that 100,000-pound mark again, or more, that we reached as an all-time high in 2019 before COVID. I think we were over 65,000 pounds without the campaign last year, which is commendable, but that just speaks to the generosity of our community. Again, this year, Doug Landem will be conducting the golf tournament. It's at Buena Vista. It will be on December 31st, so I'd, I'd ask for the county to consider putting teams together and getting out for that. In 2019, Doug, I think, reached about the $8,000 mark on that golf. And just to give you perspective in the growth, I think we had about 25,000 combined pounds in 2014 when Human Services started the effort of coordinating. So there's been tremendous, tremendous growth, and there's tremendous need. But what a, what a privilege to be able to fulfill the, the calling that we have to serve others, whether it's in protection, self-sufficiency, food insecurity. It's, it's my honor, and I will turn this now to either Tina or Debbie, just to share a little bit of data.
Dina, thank you so much for your continued support over the years. We really appreciate you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. As we kick off the Kern County Cares Food Drive, it's so important at this time of year, as Dina said, with fresh fruits and vegetables not as plentiful, canned foods are essential in filling our baskets every day. So we want to thank you for your continued efforts in this food drive. Thank you, and let's go over 100,000.
Hello, board. On my way here this morning, I was remembering that when I first came to work for the county in 1988, yes, I was very young then, I worked for Planning and Development Services, a nod to Lorelei, and I remember that, that year, the county was doing the canned food drive. So I think it's remarkable that for that many years, this county and its employees have been supporting this great cause. And I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your support, and especially to our dear Director, Dina Murphy, for the past seven years for being such a champion. I mean, she has definitely got such a heart of advocacy and support for, for the homeless and the hungry in our community. So thank you again for this proclamation. Thank you, Supervisor. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, the board will now consider Item Number 5, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask questions for clarification, make referrals to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Peters. My name is Francisco Martinez. I'm an 18-year county employee in CPS and proud member of SEIU. Today, I want to reference three articles. These articles, which in my opinion best describe the concerns I have for CPS Kern County. These concerns are for the state of CPS currently and for the state of CPS in the future. The first article referenced is an article in Bakersfield, California, October 27, 2019. It's titled, "Reported Child Abuse Cases in Kern County Higher Than Average." The Director for the Kern County Fair Children quotes, "From a fiscal and moral and public safety perspective, we have an obligation to invest in the protection of our children from the harm caused by abuse and neglect." The article starts, "Kern County can and must do better to prevent child abuse and neglect in our communities." According to the report in 2018, the state had a whole average rate of 52.9 children per 1,000 who referred to CPS with child abuse and neglect allegations. Whereas Kern County in 2018 averaged 58.4 children, so we're above the average. The next article I want to refer to is October 19, 2021. This is what I don't want to get to. Fresno County Supervisor says he was unaware of CPS kids in harder conditions last week. Fresno County Board of Supervisors first learned last week that some foster children were living in deplorable conditions inside Fresno County Child Protective Services Downtown Office where they waited placement. The supervisor met last week with, that week with county employees from SEIU, which represents social workers and many other employees. He thanked the SEIU workers for speaking out, and he encouraged them to, employees to bring any other issues to the county. And then lastly, just to want to let you know, I've expressed my concerns. I've talked to Supervisor Perez, Supervisor Couch. I've reached out to Supervisor Maggert, Scrivner, and Peters. I'll reach out again today. I would like to meet with you, and I'm glad also that Ryan Alsop, the CAO's office, reached out to one of our members to discuss other things. So I'll reach out to Scrivner, Maggert, and Peters, see if they are available this week or next week, talk about my concerns.
Thank you, sir. And just a reminder, that's two minutes per speaker, so if we could try and be mindful of that, I would appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Janine Adams. I live in Tehachapi, and I'm a District 2 constituent. More importantly, I'm one of your employees for the last 10 years. In fact, I'm one of the 2,965 employees at Step E that have been there for, stuck for some time. So first, I would like to say how excited I am about the current economic factors affecting our property tax revenue have remained strong. The real estate market continues to move at a rapid pace, supported by housing affordability when compared to the rest of the state. Both the CAO, Ryan Alsop, and this board are aware that real estate values are the single largest component of the county's property tax revenue. With less than 15% of our overall tax dollars fiscal year ending 2022 came from oil and gas. However, the really great news, I mean, the great, great news, is that oil prices are currently trading at prices not seen since 2014, possibly as much as 90% higher than what the valuation was for our last fiscal year that we're in right now. Of course, our tax valuations are based on oil and other properties as of January 1st. Final numbers are not provided to this board until June 30th. However, in the few short months, when, once we get to January 1st, we will have a clear indication of what's going to happen next. I'm asking this board to direct their bargaining team to take these positive economic factors into account while bargaining at the table with my union in good faith, SEIU. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, Chairman Peters, board members. My name's Imelda Seja Butkowicz, spelled I-M-E-L-D-A-C-E-J-A hyphenated Butkowicz, I've been a project specialist at Kern County for 21 years. I am a member of SEIU Local 521. I live in District 1, and I am a voter. You heard loud and clear, employees rejected the county's last and final offer, but I want to thank you for coming back to the bargaining table. However, your counterproposal failed to address the more than 2,900 workers currently on Step E, including me. The problem is that the county is only offering general wages increase in 2022, but nothing in 2023. Is this how you treat the most qualified, experienced, seasoned veterans who have worked for the county for many decades without a raise for the past 14 years? More importantly, I'm worried about public safety and the growing homelessness, violence, and behavioral health issues. Too many of our neighbors and family members can't receive quality public services that the county is responsible to administer. COVID has not helped the situation. We need to keep our families and children safe and healthy. Another, another problem, the county's counterproposal, is a class-in comp. Public health, as you know, has been identified as difficult to recruit and retain public health nurses, office physical therapists, occupational therapists, and we have issues with our laboratory. These are all critical services that we provide. This is all due to depressed wages. We have been working day and night through this pandemic, and yes, we report to work each and every day. Our public health nurses earn less, $4 make less, make $4 less in Kern Medical. Other hospitals pay $7 more. Some of the other hospitals are giving bonuses to come over. We're losing nurses. We have no nurses. You know, I'm sure the Director of Public Health.
Could you bring your comments to a close, please? We're 20 seconds over.
Oh, okay, sorry. So with your class-in comp, please include the public health nurses, the occupational therapists, and the laboratory on top of your list. These are critical services. So I ask the board to come together, prioritize communities, and finally invest into critical services. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Schaffner, and I'm a member of the SEIU 521, and I'm a social worker with the Department of Human Services. Thank you for coming back to the tables with the bargaining team and reexamining the 934 Kern County employees that were left behind. This is definitely a step in the right direction. As we work towards a speedy resolution, I ask the Board of Supervisor to please consider a few things. At the Department of Human Services, we have 469 social workers assigned to divisions based on their experience, skill set, and educational level. There are currently 44 vacancies. Here are some examples of what social workers do and classifications. A domestic violence social worker is skilled to assist victims of violent crimes to safety working alongside with law enforcement. Social worker is assigned to commercially sexual exploitation of children. In a RAP unit, walk the streets of Union Avenue searching for runaway foster youth. Resource family approval, social workers complete background checks and home assessments for foster families to provide stable and loving homes for the children in Kern County. And emergency social workers, emergency response, social workers work side by side with law enforcement when a child has been a victim of physical and/or sexual abuse. So I have a couple of questions. How is a county prepared to manage the classifications under the new 10-step? Why would a social worker 1 want to stay in that classification for 10 years? 1 want to stay in that classification for 10 years? I'm not sure on that. Why, in fact, why would a social worker 2 stay in that classification additionally at 10 years? My position and its entire classification series was already allocated for, and instead of a 5% increment next year, the county proposed I will only receive 2%. It is now going to take me an additional four years to receive top pay. I'm now receiving a decrease in pay. This, to me, is not retaining your social workers, but is causing more of us to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning Chairman Peters and Supervisors and everyone. My name is Osie Crawford. I think Ms. Kraus knows me a bit. I'm a father, grandfather, great-grandfather. In nine years, I might be a great-great-grandfather. But anyway, I've seen a lot in my time, and I'm really alarmed at what's going on in the world. It seems like I'm like a power revere, but hopefully, but the world needs to be awakened. To me, we have fallen asleep. We have forgotten the Constitution, the Nuremberg Code of Justice, which by the way, I gave you all a copy, a booklet of the Constitution, and I would recommend read, not the Constitution, that's boring, but read some of the amendments, the first four and the 10th. The 10th says that the state has the power. The federal government was severely limited in the Constitution, and for good reason. But the state has power. And also, county supervisors and mayors have power to uphold the Constitution that they swore that they would do when they were elected by the people who pay their salaries. I would just like to mention that our law enforcement, especially the sheriffs, are paid to take care of the people. Okay, they have to catch the bad guys who's trying to steal my car, my TV, and so forth. But what about corrupt politicians who are stealing my liberty?
Excuse me. Please let's hear Mr. Crawford speak. Thank you.
So, I'm just saying that our founding fathers told us several times that we have to keep an eye. We have to watch those who are elected, and we have to question authority. What I'm questioning is, I feel that human beings were created by God all equally. We all have equal value, and that we should be respected, and we should be sovereign over our bodies. The Constitution, our founding fathers fought for, fought for our freedoms, which is backed up by the Constitution. So, I'm just saying, let us return to the Constitution and become a constitutional county. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Yeah, my name is Mohammed Guraya, and this is only regarding the homeless. I am bitten by last three, four years.
Sir, if you're going to speak on the homeless issue, that's that's item number 14, and that's going to be coming up. I believe that's our first item we're going to take after this. So, that'd probably be the best time. I appreciate it. Are there any other public speakers?
Good morning. My name is Tawana Quinn, and I've been a Kern Medical Pharmacy patient for 20 years. I'm a voter and Supervisor Perez District. I am requesting that the Board, that this Board of Supervisors work with Kern Medical administrators to fund and keep our pharmacy open. It is so convenient to have all of our medical directors, medical doctors, and pharmacists, technicians in the same building. I receive over 13 medications, 13 prescriptions from Kern Medical Pharmacy. My pain medication is not always available at general pharmacies in this area because they are not suited to handle controlled medications the way Kern Medical Pharmacy is able to. On top of that, the pharmacy staff is the friendliest and patient and understanding staff that I've ever ran into, and I believe these workers deserve to keep their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi. My name is Melissa Wolfenstein. I'm a registered voter. I'm also a resident of Mike Maggard's District 3, and I'm here also to talk about the closing of Sagebrush Pharmacy. I go to this pharmacy regularly, and I happened to go last November 2, which was a week ago today, and found out that it's being closed without any notification. This pharmacy is amazing. And the main reason I was going last Tuesday was because I'm looking at a diagnosis of my second autoimmune disease, a new one called ankylosing spondylitis. I had to get x-rays. I had to get updated lab works, and I had to pick up my prescriptions all at one place. And that was just a week ago. You guys take that away from me, it's going to be really difficult. And the reason is, is you can see I'm wearing two braces. I've been recommended to have a new brace as of Friday to go all the way up my body and hold my neck in place so that I don't do this and get permanently stuck. I need that pharmacy. What I got told is even riding in a car over a speed bump will give me another compression fracture. So, every time, I have to go somewhere else. And then let's not even talk about the problems that I have, just like the other lady, trying to use CVS, Walgreens, Costco, Sam's Clubs. None of them are really able to deal with the controlled substance issues, and the knowledge and the experience of your pharmacy staff is unparalleled. And you guys want to break it up? It's ridiculous. That pharmacy is priceless in their knowledge. It's priceless in what we need as patients here. Please, please find a way to fund it. I don't care how you do it, but it's needed, you know? You're making, you're going to make me have to now take and go to a third trip specialty to a pharmacy and drive. And I don't drive, so I have to use medical transport. Please-
We're about 30 seconds over almost, so if you could bring your comments to a close.
Many blessings. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi. My name is Sheree Ancheda. I'm a pharmacy technician at Kern Medical outpatient pharmacies. I work at Campus and Sagebrush. I'm also the shop steward and represented with Local 521. I thank you guys. I know that we've met with Couch, and we have a future meeting and Perez. And I think you guys all, and Maggard, we spoke with you. But to say that this pharmacy closure is not going to be missed is unbelievable. We fill 100, we filled 154,000 prescriptions. That wasn't even in a year span last year. We waited on 13,000 and 81 patients. And I hear it every day from the patients, where will they go? We fill the prescriptions for the homeless factor, for the patients that have nowhere to go. We also, we fill, if they don't get their medications, where are they going to go? We need you guys to step up and help us fight this fight to keep it open. We even have our patients that are psychiatric patients that get put into homes, and if they don't get their medications, they can't be put into those homes. This is going to affect everybody in the communities. It's really a big thing. Our elderly, we also give the discounted price because we're part of the program, and that's the 340B program. We're able to buy the medications at a lower retail price, and then we turn around and give them the discount. I know that the hospital is in business of saving lives. It's not about making money. So, I really feel that you, we need you to help us. We, I don't care where it comes from. I'm the voice of all the employees, and it's important that we do everything possible to keep this open. There's so many people we help, and it's really important that we get this done. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And please feel free to reach out to my office, and maybe we can set up a time that we could speak about it and talk about those concerns a little bit more.
Thank you very much.
And Supervisor Perez, did you want to jump in there?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate that. Ryan, I was just hoping we could address this subject to some degree because you and I have had these conversations a lot. I know we've been fighting. I know Russell Judd also, Russell Judd and Rudy Salas and myself had a very impassioned meeting with the Governor. I mean, we have gone to great lengths to save this place because I think there's nothing like it, and the kind of clientele that are served are special needs largely.
Absolutely.
Members of my family have been part of that. So, I understand it, and I say it with the greatest sensitivity because of how precious that place is, and the kind of TLC and the care that is given, and also the kind of wraparound services that we know can occur there. It has been hell. Okay, I'm being honest. It is hard. That man has fought, as well as Russell Judd, as well as Rudy Salas. We have really been on the cutting edge of it, trying. So, I'd like an update because it's been a few months, and that's what I was going to ask for. But I want you to know, this is important to a lot of people. I promise you. And if there's a way that we can save it, we absolutely should. But I understand the mandates that are coming from the state are pretty profound. They're, you know, they're pretty sweeping, and you know, sometimes this kind of thing gets sucked in with that, and it is tragic in this particular instance. And I want to have a larger discussion about it. It's not agenda, so we can't really get into a lot of detail. But I just want you to know this is important. It's been important to your CAO, as well as Russell Judd, and also Jay Justin, who I work with from the pharmacy department, who has expressed many, many times, the discontent and utter travesty that will happen here, which I promise you is not the county's fault. However, if we can find a solution, we should. And it really means a lot that you're here. Not trying to cut anybody off. Please give us more information so we can, so we have context about what's going on here.
I'll get you all that that you need.
But this gentleman, if he's going to speak, in no way am I trying to cut that off. He just-
We work together. I'm here to speak on behalf of the same mission. My name is Gabriel Garcia, G-A-B-R-I-E-L, G-A-R-C-I-A. I'm a nurse practitioner working at Kern Medical, specifically at Sagebrush, and I'm here on behalf of the closure of the pharmacies. I treat patients in an outpatient primary care setting. I write their prescriptions. They go to Sagebrush Pharmacy. They go to Campus Pharmacy. The amount of patients that I treat that go to these pharmacies is immense. Estimates, about 60% of my patients. They're good people. They're humble people. And yes, they're very poor people. Having everything in one location, whether it be their primary care provider, myself, their labs, their x-rays, and their pharmacy, one-stop shop for them saves them a world of transportation issues, babysitting issues, money issues. I mean, simply just having money for gas, which we all know is incredibly expensive at this time. I want to thank you guys for your time. If you guys can continue with hard work to try to fund these pharmacies, we would appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, yes. My name is Rithi Patel. I'll be speaking on Agenda Item, oh, Maggard always leaves when I come up to speak. Why? Coward. But I'm going to speak on Agenda Item 14 later, but I'd like to set this stage also for Kern County, also for what the employees behind me were speaking. The union employees said pharmacies in other parts of the state in the same positions have received funding from their county to stay open and hope Kern County will step in and do the same. So, let's not blame the state, LaTisia, because there's something that Kern County could do, but is choosing not to. Then, let's go on. Don't interrupt me. One in three Kern worker households live below a living wage. This is fourth highest among all California counties and second highest in the nation among large counties, specifically counties of 800,000 and above. That means many people in Kern County are seeing income insecurity along with housing insecurity. And specifically, I would hope Dr. Anna Laven, still sitting behind me as we proclaim this Homeless Youth Awareness Month, would also make a public comment on Agenda Item 14 opposing an anti-camping ordinance that the county wants to do. So, let's not showboat here. LaTisia, you're in election cycle. Okay, let's be real. You're doing this because you need good PR. Don't interrupt me. And so, I'm going on to say that, I don't, don't interrupt me. I'm, don't interrupt me. I'm going on to say that, let's be real, you guys use community members for good PR. So, let's not showboat, proclaim these months, and then literally make it illegal later on today to literally sit camper, lie down here. The county is in shambles, and it's because of all of you. Union workers deserve a raise. We need more healthcare. We need affordable housing, and all of you are underfunding it. The sheriffs got over $250 million in the budget. Departments got less than $20 million. Get it together. It's gross.
Could we have our next speaker, please? Any other speakers? Okay. Our next item is number six, Board Member Announcements or Reports. Are there any reports or announcements from the Board? Supervisor Scrivner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very sad topic to bring up this morning. Unfortunately, Ida Perkins, the President and CEO of the Greater Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce, passed away last week after an 18-month illness. I first met Ida nearly 20 years ago when I was working for a field, as a field representative for Kevin McCarthy. And she, at the time, she was the administrative assistant for the Chamber, but she moved up to the, to the top post shortly after I met her. Ida organized, obviously, some of the, of the normal things we think of when we think of a Chamber of Commerce, President, CEO, the ribbon cuttings, the networking lunches, the advocacy for small and large businesses. But there was a lot more that the Chamber in Tehachapi did. They organized the Tehachapi Mountain Festival Parade and Carnival, and the Tehachapi Christmas Parade, and several other events they were engaged in. And so, the Chamber and Ida was a very integral part of the community, and she will be sorely missed. So, my thoughts and prayers go out to her husband, Rick, and her entire family. And so, Mr. Chairman, I request that we adjourn our meeting today in Ida's memory. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. And I'd like to apologize to our Director of Public Health, Brenn Kerrigan. We normally start Board Members' announcements with a report on the COVID pandemic, but I was getting a little ahead of myself here on the agenda, so I didn't invite Ms. Kerrigan down.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. On August 28, Kern County's seven-day average case rate peaked during the third surge at 43.6 per 100,000 people. As of Friday, our case rate was 27.2. At my last presentation to your Board two weeks ago, it was 22.6. On September 13, Kern County's COVID-19 hospitalizations peaked with 336 hospitalizations. Our COVID-related ICUs peaked on October 3 with 80 ICU patients. As of today, we have 227 hospitalizations and 55 ICU patients. This time two weeks ago, we had 219 hospitalizations and 75 in the ICU. As of yesterday, Kern County's hospital system had 233 staffable available regular hospital beds and 20 staffable available ICU beds. Kern's ICU capacity is 7.3%, and San Joaquin Regional ICU capacity is 11%. The state has made a change to their modeling. There are now three scenarios: green, or the best-case scenario, where vaccine efficacy increases by 20%. Purple, or moderate-case scenario, where vaccine efficacy remains stable. And teal, or worst-case scenario, where vaccine efficacy against disease transmission decreases by 30%. Basically, the modeling is based on the rates of booster doses administered in the community and the anticipated level of immunity we will have. In two of the three scenarios, we never fully recover from the third surge before we start to see another increase in cases and hospitalizations. And in one of them, the increase is substantial. Specifically, in the worst-case scenario, the modeling suggests our peak to be at 1,414 daily new cases on February 8, 2022. The moderate-case scenario suggests a plateau with our cases holding steady at around 120 daily cases during late March and early April. The best-case scenario suggests a steady continual decrease in disease transmission. The hospitalization model is reflecting very similarly to the cases model. Specifically, the worst-case scenario indicates that our secondary peak will occur on February 13 with 1,031 hospitalizations, which is 700 more hospitalizations than we saw at the peak of the third surge. The moderate-case scenario reflects a plateau with 120 hospitalizations holding steady during late March and early April 2022. The best-case scenario projects a steady continual decrease in hospitalizations. It's difficult to know exactly which scenario we will trend with, but we do know that our vaccination and booster dose rates are relatively low, which would suggest, based on definition, that we'll likely track along the worst-case scenario. Modeling tends to be more accurate within 30 days, so I would anticipate some changes in what the modeling suggests. However, the modeling remains a great planning resource tool. We will continue to watch the modeling closely and have already began planning with the- We will continue to watch the modeling closely and have already began planning with the state for earlier hospital assistance should we start to see significant increases. As of yesterday, 880,746 doses of the COVID-19 vaccine have been administered to Kern County residents. 411,557 or 54.6% of Kern's eligible population excluding five to 11-year-olds have been fully vaccinated against COVID-19. Another 52,897 people have one dose of their two-dose series, meaning 61.6% of Kern's eligible population is at least partially vaccinated. 73.4% of our 65 and older population are fully vaccinated. 42.4% of our 12 to 17-year-old population is fully vaccinated. 593 doses have been administered to our five to 11-year-old population since the vaccine was authorized in this age group late on Wednesday. This action expanded the eligible population by 99,526 people in Kern County. Because of this increase in eligible population, our percentages of fully and partially vaccinated populations will decrease from previous reports and future presentations. This week, the week of October 25th, 2021, 18,067 doses were administered to Kern County residents, which is the highest week of vaccine administration since the week of May 17th, 2021. According to the California Department of Public Health, during the period of October 18th through October 24th, unvaccinated Californians were 6.8 times more likely to get COVID-19 than fully vaccinated Californians. Unvaccinated Californians were 9.5 times more likely to be hospitalized with COVID-19 than vaccinated Californians. And unvaccinated Californians are 18.2 times more likely to die from COVID-19 than fully vaccinated Californians. Kern's average daily case rate over the past 14 days is 29.43 per 100,000. Our vaccinated average daily case rate is 4.49, while our unvaccinated average daily case rate is 44.79. Over the last 14 days, 92.87% of our cases are amongst those who are unvaccinated. Since January 21st, Kern County has had 59,728 cases with 56,784 or 95.07% being amongst those who are unvaccinated and 2,944 or 4.93% being amongst those who are fully vaccinated. .73% of our fully vaccinated population have tested positive for COVID-19. During this same time period, we've had 2,638 COVID-related hospitalizations. 2,522 or 95.6% were in those who are unvaccinated and 116 or 4.4% are in those who are vaccinated. .029% of our vaccinated population have been hospitalized with COVID-19. We have identified 1,100 individuals who have positive tests more than 90 days from their initial positive test. This equates to .72% of our residents who have had COVID-19 that have been reinfected as compared to .73% of our vaccinated population who have had a post-vaccination infection. There have been 134 individuals who have been reinfected with COVID-19 who were hospitalized during one or more of their COVID-19 illnesses. 50 were hospitalized only during their first infection. 58 were hospitalized only during their second infection and 26 were hospitalized with both infections. Those who were hospitalized during their second infection are following development of some level of natural immunity totals 84 or .055% of the Kern County's population who has had COVID-19. For comparison, .029% of the vaccinated population has been hospitalized. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this completes my update.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Perez?
I wanted to let you know, I went by Friday and had my children vaccinated at the county facility at the fair and it was just stunning. I was so impressed. I think I sent you a note about it, but I wanted to say publicly how impressive your operation is, how smooth it was, how just comforted and there was an area to play with the kids when you're being observed and they had little things to take away that, you know, reminded them of the importance of the vaccination. Staff was incredibly professional, followed the rules to a T. They seemed very serious about what they're doing and I was just really blown away. I'm going to tip my hat to you and all of the people there. I know it's a big team effort, lots of people involved, but you know, it is under your watch. The buck stops with you and I wanted to say you're doing a hell of a job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Any other board member announcements or reports? Okay, our next item is Item 14 under the CIO's office. And as a public hearing, to consider proposed ordinance adding Chapter 8.30 to Title 8 of the Kern County Ordinance Code to specify times and locations where it shall be unlawful for a person to camp or place personal effects in the public area. And for that report, I will turn it over to Mr. Jim Servis.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman and members of the board. Over the past few years, the county, in addition to the city and other service providers, have devoted substantial resources towards assisting members of the community experiencing homelessness. The county has, among other things, opened the Low Barrier M Street Navigation Center in May 2020, providing 150 beds with wraparound services. Awarded over $2 million in two rounds of homeless housing assistance and prevention grant funds to expand and provide coordinated services to the homeless population in 2020 and 2021. Implemented a new evidence-based model called the Relational Outreach and Engagement, the Rome Model, which is utilized by behavioral health to prevent mentally ill clients from falling into homelessness. Setting aside $2 million to support the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative to address the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic on individuals experiencing homelessness and provided over $67 million in federal and state rental assistance money to financially support, in federal and state rental assistance to support residents financially impacted by the pandemic and prevent the risk of homelessness. Unfortunately, Kern County continues to experience large numbers of individual, individuals and families who are homeless due to factors such as job loss, family crisis, substance abuse, economic reasons, mental health issues and loss of temporary housing. Between 2017 and 2021, the homeless point in time count increased from 810 to 2,150. That's 165% increase. The point in time count reveals that on any given night, large numbers of people, including families, experiencing homelessness can be found sleeping on the sidewalks, parks, abandoned buildings, under bridges and in other places not meant for human habitation. On any given night, homeless encampments may be occupied by multiple individuals. Homeless encampments occur without appropriate sanitation facilities or proper trash receptacles and often become contaminated with garbage, human waste, used needles, resulting in occupants and the general public and public servants facing serious health and sanitation issues. I'll add that they also become fire hazards as we've seen several fires break out in these types of encampments. On October 12th, your board was prevented with an extensive, multi-departmental strategic action plan that builds on the county's existing efforts to reduce homelessness and mitigate its impacts on health and public safety and quality of life within the community. This plan makes significant investments in a variety of complementary efforts to help those suffering from homelessness, including increasing available shelter space, developing a safe parking and camping location, development of a tiny home project, really better described as a non-congregate support services center, adding rapid response teams to engage homeless, connect them with needed services and abate the health and safety issues that exist within unmanaged, unmanaged encampments, investments in behavioral health and mental health services and expanding our relational outreach and engagement model, those Rome Teams, adding more mobile evaluation teams, MET teams, and building co-response teams partnering with mental health workers and law enforcement, including the sheriff's office and Bakersfield Police Department, to engage and help the homeless individuals. An ordinance, in addition to an ordinance following the law and best practices aimed to reduce unsafe, unmanaged encampments and facilitate engagement with homeless individuals and connecting them with service providers and housing. All of these initiatives are actively being worked on by the, by county staff and currently in implementation or design phase. Your board set aside $15 million in ARPA funding to help support mental health, substance, substance abuse and homelessness-related issues. Many of these items that we just presented on this list and discussed at the October 12th meeting are being funded with that, that ARPA allocation. However, this ordinance is not. Want to be clear that the development and implementation of strictly the ordinance that we're discussing today is not being funded with ARPA funding. As we know, there is not one simple solution to ending homelessness. This is a complex problem and all of these activities that were just discussed bring different tools and resources to addressing these issues. The ordinance being considered today is just one of those tools. This is not an exhaustive list and does not supplant the existing work of the city of Bakersfield, the county, Flood Ministries, the Bakersfield Homeless Center, CAP-K, City Serve and the many other organizations that are working on various aspects of homelessness. On October 12th, your board introduced an ordinance to add Chapter 8.30, Title 8, to the Kern County Ordinance Code and set a public hearing to consider the adoption for that ordinance today. The purpose of this ordinance is to address the impact of homeless, homeless encampments on health and public safety and quality of life in Kern County by restricting camping, lying and storing personal effects in public areas. This proposed ordinance has been tailored to the specific needs of Kern County, considers best, best practices from other jurisdictions and is consistent with existing laws. The proposed ordinance includes the following main provisions. It would prohibit camping, sitting or lying down with the intent to camp in public areas such as sidewalks, streets, alleys, doorways, entrances to buildings, public parking lots, parks, underpasses, riverbeds, bike paths and open spaces in such a way to obstruct vehicular traffic or pedestrian access. It will prohibit camping, sitting or lying down with the intent to camp within 500 feet of a fence, entrance or exit of a public or private K-12 school. It would prohibit camping, sitting or lying down with the intent to camp within 500 feet of an entrance or exit of a public library or facility that provides housing shelter, support services or storage to homeless persons. It would prohibit camping, sitting or lying down within 10 feet of a public sidewalk or curb adjacent to a residentially zoned property with the exception of a property, with the exception of the property owner or with that owner's permission. It will prohibit the storage, use, maintenance or placement of personal property in public areas such as sidewalks, streets, alleys, doorways, entrances to buildings, public parking lots, parks, underpasses, riverbeds, bike paths and open spaces. It establishes a process for notice and enforcement, including removal of property. It establishes a process for collecting and preserving removed property for 90 days. And it establishes a process to connect homeless, to connect the homeless individuals to available shelter space and precludes the enforcement of this ordinance if no such shelter space exists. Although today's public hearing is regarding this ordinance, as mentioned previously, this ordinance does not stand alone. It is one component, one tool of a plan, of a much larger plan that includes both multi-departments within the county as well as other agencies, part of the strategic action plan in dealing with homelessness. It is recommended that your board make findings that the ordinance is not subject to the requirements of SEQA and if determined to be a project, is exempt from further SEQA review pursuant to Sections 15061B3, 150, 15308 and 15321 of the state SEQA guidelines to hold the public hearing and enact the proposed ordinance. I'll be available to answer any questions from, from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Servis. Supervisor Perez?
Jim, you're awesome. Thank you for your presentation, very thorough. Please don't be offended. I'm going to ask Lorelei for some clarification.
Sure.
Lorelei, can you help give some, a little more depth on why this is SEQA exempt? If you wouldn't mind and if you have some sense about what other counties are doing? If not, I understand. But if you could help give some placement about that, please? I really appreciate it. Thank you, Jim. I'm a big fan, as you know. Good morning.
Good morning. Lorelei Oviat, Director of Planning and Natural Resources. So this was designed by county council, so I would refer to Margot Razan and her team to address this issue. This is not a project under SEQA because there is no physical changes. We are not building facilities. We are not constructing any facilities that would have an impact on the environment. Therefore, it is exempt. However, I would defer to county council who designed this ordinance for any more of your questions. Thank you.
Any sense, Lorelei, about other counties on this particular ordinance? Are we?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the other ordinance. I believe they are different from our ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through the chair, with your indulgence, thank you. If you could please address the SEQA issue.
Good morning, Chairman Perez, through the chair. If I could, I'd ask Brian Van Wyk to, to address your board.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Supervisor Perez, through the chair. As Lorelei stated, the reason why this is not subject to SEQA is it doesn't create any physical change to the environment. It can be seen from looking at the ordinance that this is not the type of action that's going to have significant impacts on the environment. However, even if it were, there are categorical exemptions in SEQA that categorically exempt similar activity such as regulatory, law enforcement-type actions that would be authorized by this ordinance.
Have you looked at other counties, how they're dealing with the SEQA, potential SEQA challenges to such an ordinance? Do you have any sense of that?
My understanding is that other counties are relying on the general rule exemption that it doesn't create a significant impact on the environment.
Okay, so they're within that same framework or understanding in terms of the methodology?
That's correct.
Excellent. That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the explanation to me first. Thank you, but also for the public. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board right now? Oh, I'm sorry, Lorelei.
Sorry.
Director Oviat.
So I'd like, would like to clarify one part of the ordinance that Mr. Servis brought up, which is this, part of the ordinance that discusses next to residential, residential property and he indicated, Mr. Servis? He indicated that, if you could recreate it for me? He indicated that it was allowed with the permission of the neighbors? Is that what it said?
The permission of the property owner.
So I just want to be clear that this is not legalizing camping. The zoning ordinance does not allow you to camp on vacant property. This is a different distinction in the ordinance and it deals with public spaces. So this ordinance is not legalizing camping. We have many, many people who have come to the county who want to set up glamping, bed and breakfast, Airbnb's. They want to set up tents. This ordinance is not legalizing that. However, it is indicating that if you have a public space next to your residential property, is that my understanding, Mr. Servis? That with permission?
You can sit.
You can sit. So I just want to clarify for the public.
Without the intent to camp.
That, yeah, that this is not legalizing camping with the permission of the neighbors. Thank you.
Got it. That's very helpful. Lorelei, thank you and Jim, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, this doesn't supersede, as Lorelei is indicating, any other restrictions that may be in place regarding camping in, in different spaces. So this is a, it's a new tool specifically in, in this case, discussing sitting, camping, lying down, where we're obstructing pedestrian access and, and vehicular access. And so there are exceptions made if you're the property owner and you're sitting on the, on the curb or the sidewalk in front of your, your house, for example. But again, it doesn't, doesn't allow, it doesn't supersede any other regulations that may be in place that prohibit camping in that area.
So do you see any obvious places where it would conflict with any existing ordinances that we already have?
No, I don't, no, I don't. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's, that's enough on that because it seems like it would be grafted with our existing methodology about such things. Okay, very good. At some point, and I don't need to hear it now, but at some point in this presentation, I'd like to know how intent is established to stay or not to stay. It reminds me a little bit of domicile and how domicile is created about intent and where you intend to sleep at night. Excuse me, or even where you intend to return, even if you're away from your original domicile for some time. College kids, for example, intend to return often to their hometown or even their parents' home or family members and their voter registration stays there, for example. So establishing intent on domicile is very important. So establishing intent on domicile is very important as to residents. So I'm curious about that. Is there a period of time that a person can sit down and not be considered having the intent to stay overnight or intent to camp? I would like some clarity on that at some point. This moment may not be it, but if it's somebody, somebody at some point, perhaps after public testimony, I would like to hear some clarification on that. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Right now, we will go to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this item?
Chairman Peters, members of the board. My name is Terry Delamater, and I recently received a code violation notice for allowing camping on my 10-acre property. It is my contention that, to be consistent with the current regulations, the board really should pass this ordinance to prohibit camping in public areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Anna Lavine. I'm the Executive Director for the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, and I did have an opportunity when the full complement of programming related to addressing encampments came before your board. So I simply really want to echo what I've already stated, which is the county has very clearly worked very, very hard at developing a strong program that addresses a whole number and host of gaps that we have when it comes to addressing homelessness and those who are unsheltered. And when we look at the best practices across the country, there's a HUD report that came out a number of years ago with regard to encampments. It's very clear that an ordinance alone obviously just moves people around. The benefit, though, of what the county is really striving for, and I would say it follows in suit with what we've been seeing at the city as well, is that essentially this. When you have those wraparound services, when you're looking at addressing all of the gaps that we have, we know that we can be particularly successful and that those are truly the best practices that we know exist. And we can see that behavioral health has been incorporated. We can see that strong outreach has been incorporated. The tiny homes is a really strong opportunity. There's a lot of non-congregate sheltering that's being looked at as well. All of those pieces are really critical to this work, and I think will allow the ordinance itself to be particularly successful. Because really, our goal here is this. Our goal is to get folks off the streets. We know that anyone who's on the streets, they essentially are eliminating 10 years off of their life as a result of the impacts of being on the streets. So when we can get somebody into temporary housing, when we can get them permanently housed, that's where we see success. And I think, as Mr. Services referenced, there is a lot of work that's gone into making sure that we have all of the tools in our toolkit to try to address those who are unsheltered and to support them in gaining permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez?
Anna, I've got some questions for you, because I'm struggling with this one. And what I see when I just look out my window or I drive around town, you know, is an increasing amount of people who really don't seem to be incentivized one way or the other, either because we're failing, right? I'm happy to say that we could be failing, and if so, I want to work on it. But there appears to be a growing amount of people who think that this kind of behavior is better suited for them or whatever. I don't understand. I'm not an expert. So what, how many homeless would you say are living in tents? If you had to approximate, how many homeless people are living in, let's say, the Bakersfield metro area? Around the businesses, around downtown, folks that cannot get housing or cannot get whatever? How many?
Truthfully, I don't know that I would be able to get that number for you right now, but I could certainly report back to you. What I would want to do is get back out with the street outreach organizations.
Okay.
They do a variety of work and sampling all the time, but I don't know that I can give you a number today.
What about available bed space? What do we have there?
We have, as I think you all are familiar, we've doubled the number of beds as of last year. I mean, a Herculean effort by both the county and the city to launch the M Street Navigation Center as well as Brundage Lane Navigation Centers. And then, in fact, I believe the city council is just going to be expanding even further at Brundage Lane, which we're really super excited about.
When is that going to happen?
I believe they're targeting that for spring of next year. It's very rapid. So the design will be going back to the city council on December 15th for that expansion, because that's another 150 beds on top of the doubling we had last year.
That is fantastic. Thank you. Really, thank you. The issue with Boise, as you know, is available bed space. It wasn't that the city or county or anybody is okay with folks just pitching a tent and living wherever they want to live. I mean, that is, that's crazy, Anna. I mean, I think we've gotten to a point of diminished return, and I don't know what the solutions are, but if the best practices aren't working, then we aren't engaged in the best practices. Or we just, it's not coupled with enough carrot and stick. I don't know. I don't know, because I'm not the expert, and I know that you know much more than I do. But I'm looking around at a problem that seems to be growing. In particular, you know, we have official authorities that are really tied, in particular because of the Boise decision, which I think was really trying to tie up government's responsibility to actually go out and do something, like we're, like you're talking about, the city expanding. I mean, that is really great news. I really tip my hat to the city for doing that, because the issue about whether or not you can properly incentivize people to be part of society in a way that, you know, most of us would like to see occur, or a good amount of us would like to see occur, you know, I see some real problems here, Anna.
Yeah, and I would say the carrot and the stick issue is one that I certainly have heard from other collaborative members and other organizations who are very much involved in this work. And that's one of the challenges. That is one of the potential, I guess, pieces of how you could perceive the ordinance itself, is that it does provide a little bit more, particularly for our law enforcement community, to provide a little bit more assistance with sharing with folks, look, it's not appropriate, it's not safe for you to be here, and it isn't. It really isn't safe for folks to be unsheltered for a whole host of reasons. It's not safe for you here, but we do have opportunities over here. And we have multiple opportunities at this point, because trauma-informed care means that you try to provide as much choice as you can. And so now, within the metro Bakersfield city limits, we have four congregate shelters. We have California Veterans Assistance Foundation, which provides non-congregate sheltering for both youth and veterans. We have a whole complement of services that we did not have even just a few years ago.
That's very exciting, Anna. I know you've been such a central player in bringing us to best practices and thinking about the three Ps, the pets, partners, and property, you know? Those are like revolutionary moves for us, and I've been very excited about it, because it does change the conversation when you can tell somebody, we can take your pets, we can provide them with even, you know, care, if you will. So I think we're making improvements there, but the tiny houses seem to be a real incentive. Give a person a dignified, you know, box that's safe, right? That has a shower and running water to use a toilet in privacy. I mean, I think that's a real incentive to folks, to change what is, what feels like sort of a liberty-oriented space from a society that, you know, increasingly encroaches or makes it so hard to survive. I don't know. I'm not out there. But I think you feel where I'm coming from, and I'm looking at an ordinance that says we're going to continue to, you know, define what it is that's appropriate in this new era, if you will. That's how I see this, and I'm struggling with it, because I know what the knee-jerk reaction is from folks. But I'm also looking at the government apparatus and going, people are really desperately trying here. I see it. I see you. It's hard. There's, you know, there's lots of NIMBY pushback, and that's normal in every community, which is unfortunate. It's part of American culture, which I think is heartbreaking. But nonetheless, here we are. And so I'm inclined to be supportive of an effort that is going to give our officials some teeth or some formality about how to deal with this, but, you know, obviously pushing very hard for tiny houses and opportunities that, you know, transition people into a next level of, you know, upward mobility, which we know have to be small steps and gracious steps.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think even in my role, I can have incredible sense of compassion. I have a family member who has experienced homelessness throughout his life, who my family has frankly at many times struggled to help address those needs. So many of us carry immense compassion, but I also can experience frustration if I go to the park with my child and find that someone is essentially living in the playground equipment, rendering that park not being able to be used, and deciding that that needs to be called in at the same time. And so I completely understand, and I think that many of those who are on the homeless service provider side feel similarly. They also experience the negative impacts of encampments and a lot of those pieces, because they are also here in the community. So we can provide dignity, we can provide compassion, with all of those wraparound services that the county, I think, has really so thoughtfully put together as a complete program. And also say, but you can't do this here.
We have to have some order. I mean, I don't know. I'm hoping I'm seeing it correctly, because I'm trying to be, you know, forthcoming and honest about what I'm seeing and what I'm concerned about. And I really appreciate your gracious approach to a difficult subject. I think you're doing a great job here, at least, for sure. And I know that's not easy to do. So really, thank you for your maturity and your response to what is a complicated matter that we have to tread lightly on, but have to recognize that, you know, we cannot move forward as a society and as a community until we address this head-on. It's a serious problem. Thank you, Anna. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, everybody. How's it going? My name's Carlos Ramos. I live downtown. I live right on K Street, I'm between 19th and 20th, and I've been a resident there for the last 10 years. So this homeless issue is a big issue to me. I deal with it every day, day in, day out. And I want to say I 100% do not support this ordinance. It marginalizes the most vulnerable members of our society, and let's not forget, these are members of our society and our community. Not only, this is not the ward of this board to deny anybody in our community the opportunity to, our constitutional right for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Contrary to some people's beliefs here, nobody wants to live on the streets. It's a billion degrees when it's in the summer, and it's so cold in the winter that people die. I've known people that have died on these streets. But oftentimes, the services that are mentioned today, they come with stipulations, and for these people, being on the streets is the best option for them. And there are programs today that do exist. The Housing First Initiative has shown to be 95% effective in eliminating homelessness and has proven to be more cost-effective in the long run. These programs exist, and they are open to us if we have the resolve and the foresight to come to make actual, real change. And now, so I'm asking the board today to vote no on the proposed ordinance. And the worst part about this ordinance is that it not only does not fix the problem, it actually makes it worse. By removing these people from our sight, it effectively removes it from our mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Chairman Peters, member of the board. My name is Lauren Skidmore, CEO of the Bakersfield Homeless Center and Alliance Against Family Violence. I'm here today to support the ordinance. I want to thank you all for your efforts in a collaborative, innovative approach to addressing homelessness. Our organizations not only serve homeless, but they also serve domestic violence and sexual assault survivors. A lot of time, these encampments will have women that have varying degrees of trauma. We cannot effectively address their trauma unless they come to our care and they are under our roof and our shelter. This ordinance will allow us to have access and allow the clients to have access to resources that they do not think they need. They need the resources under our roof and under our care. My team, my employees have been doing this work for many, many years, and they will walk alongside survivors and homeless individuals as they find housing, as they go through this journey, and they need to know they're not alone. Our organization has housing navigators. Our primary approach is to get focused on services and then get them housed and get them to a stable, get them stabilized, and get them to the ability where they can have their own life under their own roof. So again, I'm here to support this ordinance, and I support all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. If you have comments, you're welcome to make them outside. If you want to continue talking over people, though, you're going to be asked to leave. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Yeah, my name is Mohammed Guraya, and I have a office on Stockdale Highway between McDonnell Way and North Stein. First of all, I support this ordinance which you guys are making, which is a good overall. But I have my own complaint for the last three, four years. I have a problem with the homeless people. They break in, as well as they're camping. Right now, there's a camping over there on my office. And when I come in the morning, somebody is there in the front of my door, which is the entrance from the alley, and there is a lot of poos for that human waste, and then I have to clean when they leave. Number, most important thing is when I call, it is in the county, I call the sheriff department. They come, maybe I am there for three, four hours. Either I leave, because I have some other work to do, and when they come, their main excuse is that, oh, there was more important call than yours. And I am spending, waiting maybe half a day, and that is their biggest excuse. They may be sitting in a Starbucks coffee shop. I don't know. I don't blame that, but that is my thinking, that why not, there should be a separate police for the homeless people? There are a lot of collaborative companies or people, there are a lot of millions and millions of dollars coming in here, and how many people go overnight, I mean, in nighttime to look around, how they can check? I don't think there are those people using the money in the right way. They're just, they are doing something I don't blame too much. But that is my main concern is, when I, somebody is, somebody is charging the phone, and I come by chance in the morning, and then if I did took out the phone out and that guy was going to hit me, why you are touching my phone?
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're 30 seconds over right now, so if you could bring your comments to a close, I'd appreciate it.
That is the main thing is, whenever I call, nobody comes, and if they come and they are saying, oh, there were more important calls. So this is, I am scared there to talk to those people, because if I do something, then I will be at fault. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, my name's Megan Russell. I prepared my comment, because I'm terrible at public speaking. However, there's two things I wanted to point out first that I've heard a lot of that I just want to kind of touch on first, is that, one, this ordinance that would make it illegal for people to essentially exist in public is not going to make it disappear. Like, these people are still going to be where they are. That's what I think a lot of people are not understanding, is making it illegal is just going to make it harder for these people. It is not going to make the problem go away. The problem will still be there. So these people will still be in front of people's businesses, they will still be in parks, they will still be in these places. It will just now be an extra burden on top of the burden they are already facing. So that was really important to me. And then the second thing, one of my biggest pet peeves in life is people trying to assume that they understand everyone else's circumstances, because they don't. You, like, like, I just, really, that bugs me a lot, because you could not possibly understand what someone who is homeless right now is going through, and neither do I. But we're all, we could all end up in that position, and we will never understand until we are. But that was off of what I wanted to say, so since I have a little bit of time, I will read my prepared comment. I adamantly oppose this ordinance, because it would literally make it illegal for unhoused, the unhoused community to exist in public, and that is not a solution. Their existence being a crime is not going to fix this crisis. It will exacerbate it. It will make it harder for people to get on their feet and increase the mental health strain on an already stressed population. and increase the mental health strain on an already stressed population. It's inhumane, and I really honestly feel sick. Like, I'm, I do feel sick discussing it because I cannot believe that this is something that would even be discussed today. I believe that Kern County is better than this. And I know in my heart that you guys will do the right thing and vote against it because it's absolutely inhumane. And again, it will not solve the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, Mr. Peters, members of the board. Stacy Kohaara, the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I would just like to speak to support the comprehensive plan that has been put forward by the CAO to address these homeless measures. In addition to the ordinance, the CAO is proposing to invest resources in additional shelter spaces for individuals through the tiny homes. And they're investing in supporting more behavioral health resources to support the mentally ill and substance abusing individuals who are living on the street. I had the opportunity to spend some time last week at both the 911 Communication Center and spent a day driving around with Lieutenant Burdick from the BPD Street Outreach Team. They're not arresting people. They are talking with them. We are offering services. They are encouraging them with what is available and asking them to move into safer places for themselves. There are a number of people who were camped in places that were not safe for themselves and offering them the resources that are available in the community. This plan is investing more in those resources. We have a long partnership with law enforcement. It has been very successful because behavioral health is able to do things that law enforcement can't. And our partnership has been extremely important in keeping the community safe, supporting individuals who have behavioral health needs, and making sure that they are getting connected to the right services that they need. So I would really, fully like to express my endorsement of this plan. I'm very appreciative to see the additional behavioral health workers and the investment in behavioral health and substance use that this plan puts forward. And we're out there. We're out there on the street. We're already talking to these individuals. We know what works. It takes time. It takes patience. And it takes a lot of different solutions because the people that have commented behind me are right. There is not one solution that is going to address all of the needs of every homeless individual. This is part of developing a plan that increases all of those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Isaac Langer, I S A A C L A N G E R. I wanted to, oh, I'm a resident of Mr. Peters' district. I wanted to start off by pointing out a minor issue, which I find kind of annoying. In the agenda for this meeting, it says that the fiscal impact of, or it says there is no fiscal impact of this ordinance, which I find kind of ridiculous because obviously it's going to cost money. And like I said, this is pretty minor, but I think it ties into bigger issues with the ordinance. As I understand it, the penalty for violation of this ordinance will be fining these people, which I don't see how that makes any sense because these people can't even afford a place to live. And in the justification given for this ordinance, a lack of sanitation facilities, trash receptacles, food storage, and clean dishes were cited as justification. If a lack of sanitation facilities and trash receptacles is the issue, how about we provide more sanitation facilities and trash bins? Homeless people aren't the only people who use sanitation facilities and trash bins. So I would implore you all to please reject this ordinance.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Neil Sanapa. I am a resident of District 3. For the record, my last name is spelled S A N N A P P A. I'm here to oppose this ordinance. You know, I feel like there's been a lot of talk about giving teeth and, you know, a carrot and a stick. What that means to me is that you're going to give people tools in order to force people off the streets. And when our police departments, both of them, have been investigated by our state, when we have had the deadliest police force, just statistically speaking, it's hard for me to think that this isn't going to wind up in homeless folks getting hurt, that this isn't going to wind up in people getting hurt by our officers. I don't understand how it's not. If someone refuses to leave somewhere, what do you think that escalates to? If they're forced, if it's unlawful? And it's just, it's ridiculous to me that y'all are saying, you know, oh, we've done all of these good things and now we need to force people off the streets. Just try to double down on the housing. Try to double down on the mental services that you can provide for folks because this isn't going to solve it. This really isn't going to solve it. It's inhumane to criminalize these folks. It's inhumane. And how are they going to pay a fine? How are they going to pay a fine? Lastly, I myself, I'm not a practicing Christian, but I do commend a lot of different faiths. And I just want to leave you all with this because I know a lot of you are practicing Christians. Proverbs 19:17, whoever is kind to the poor lends to the Lord, and he will reward them for what they have done. So just sit with that when you think about criminalizing these unhoused folks. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Give our next speaker, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rosa Nai Paniaua. Yeah, P A N I A G U A. All right, hi, y'all. Before I get started, I do want to acknowledge that we are all standing on the stolen lands of indigenous and native peoples of these lands. Reminder, indigenous and native folks still exist and will be stewards of this land once again. I am here to state my opposition of the anti-camping ordinance. I want to echo what a comrade shared earlier. The Housing First Initiative is the most effective solution to assisting our houseless neighbors. And if you don't know what the Housing First Initiative is, to quote Google, "This is a homeless assistance approach that prioritizes providing permanent housing to people experiencing homelessness, thus ending their homelessness and serving as a platform from which they can pursue personal goals and improve their quality of life." That's the solution, housing. Not displacing our houseless neighbors, punishing these human beings in jail cells or writing up fines for the very people who have the least ability to pay is ridiculous. Sorry. During a time of pandemic where nearly 2,000 people from Kern County have died, right now, more than ever, as a community, we need to be compassionate with our neighbors. The county plans to use funds to pay for officers to enforce this punitive ordinance. Why not use these funds to create more housing, transitional or affordable housing? There's hella options, y'all. Be proactive. Don't make it illegal to exist in public. Use these funds to increase the availability of beds and housing for low and very low income families. Our houseless neighbors need a right to housing, not a mandate that forces people into shelters. Again, I'm here to state my opposition of the anti-camping ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Emma de la Rosa, policy advocate with Leadership Council. First of all, let's start with the problems with this ordinance to dissect it. This ordinance is only going to be centered in unincorporated Bakersfield because of lack of resources or limited resources. That means that folks who are homeless are going to be spread out to the outskirts of the county. Supervisor Couch, Supervisor Perez, Peters, Scrivener, y'all have most of the outskirts of the county. This is going to be affecting you the most. So it's kind of, you know, again, concerning that this ordinance is only going to be focusing in that specific area. It's going to cause a problem for y'all later if it is passed. Another thing is that the ordinance is going to be precluded if there isn't enough shelter space. Now, there's a few definitions there on the ordinance of what it means to not have available shelter. This plan that was proposed on October 12th does not describe exactly how the code enforcement officers or whichever officer is going to be confirming whether or not that person has exceeded their stay or if they have a minor or if their sexual orientation or whatever the case may be does not allow them to be in that space. So if you are considering this ordinance, then you must have a specific plan on how that's going to be confirmed. There isn't enough detail here. Another thing is the funding situation. The October 12 staff report says, "The anticipated cost of the proposed plan, $8.3 million for four years, fiscal year 2021, 2022 cost is $1.6 million." The county will utilize its allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding to cover the initial four-year cost. I need some clarity on this issue because earlier, Mr. Service mentioned that the funding was not going to be coming from ARPA funds. So please provide some clarity on that. Another thing is your responsibility is to provide housing. Programs 2.2, 2.2.2 and 2.2.3, which is the rezoning of about 200 acres of land from R2 to R3, has still not happened. You are breaking the law. And yet, we're trying to pass an ordinance that's going to criminalize folks. Your responsibility is to provide housing, and you're not fulfilling your responsibility right now. We need to provide housing. How about we use $8.3 million for housing rather than funding those officers that are just going to make the problem worse? Another thing, really quickly, I know my time is up, but I would like to offer some alternatives here. The Homeless Coordinating and Financing Council, which was created in 2017, provides $47.5 million for jurisdictions to apply for to develop innovative cross-systems collaboration amongst jurisdictions and continuum of care, such as behavioral health. There is a technical assistance webinar on November 19th, which I encourage y'all to attend so y'all can learn more about that program. Again, it's 47.5 million. Yes, sir.
Record a bit over.
Okay, thank you. The total is 47.5. That's going to be divided amongst jurisdictions who apply. And the deadline to apply is December 31st. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning. My name is Maya Rios, and I am a policy advocate organizer with the ACU SoCal office here in Bakersfield. And I am here on behalf of our office to express our disapproval of this camping ordinance. First of all, starting with what's been mentioned, that ARPA funding will be used to fund this ordinance, where the funds are intended to mitigate the economic fallout of COVID-19, which include loss of jobs and loss of housing income, which have rendered more community members houseless. And yet, here we are considering an ordinance that is going to displace and potentially criminalize people when we could be using these funds, as has been pointed out, towards more permanent solutions. The Board has stated this ordinance is not criminalization ordinance, but it does include police presence in its outreach programs. So we want to just point out that when we offer services and outreach at the threat of enforcement, that's going to interfere with the establishment of trust that is needed in order to be able to provide these services. Civilian outreach programs, for example, have been shown to produce much better outcomes and be more effective at getting people housed. Additionally, putting armed police in situations where they're going to interact with unhoused people who have mental illnesses or disabilities leads to the potential of escalated situations to the point of deadly violence, as we have seen in other jurisdictions that have these types of ordinances, like LA. And although administrative citations on their own don't really present a danger of criminal enforcement, we have seen also in other jurisdictions that have similar ordinances, the escalation of encounters to the point of using certain charges as disturbing the peace or PC 148 when folks protest their citations because they can't pay. So that is another issue. Criminalization of poverty is already a huge issue in Kern. Million-dollar hoods data from 2003 to 2017 showed that BPD criminalized homelessness from 9% of all arrests in 2003 to 32% of all arrests in 2017, most of those being crimes of poverty. So we see a lot of issues. We also have questions about the ordinance. Supervisor Perez, a great question about intent. We have questions about how it's going to be enforced, how we are going to keep folks that maybe can't, don't have housing available from multiple attempts at enforcement, things of this sort, that we just urge you to take time to consider and not vote on this ordinance today until we have more time to consider these really important issues.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning. Before my time starts, I do want to present petitions. There are 500 signatures in opposition of this anti-camping ordinance. My name is Jose Oriana. I'm from Delano, California. I'm an organizer with Loud for Tomorrow. And yeah, I'm just, my comment is I'm really disappointed in our elected officials for even considering this ordinance. I sent a copy of these signatures yesterday to each of your offices and will be sending another one because it is close to 500 signatures of residents from all over Kern County. The petition reads, "Dear Kern County Board of Supervisors, homelessness should not be a crime in our Kern County, and I'm urging you to oppose that anti-camping ordinance. Right now, our county has far too many shelters, transitional housing, and affordable homes to serve our residents. When it comes to services that our county does offer, many are not truly accessible to our unhoused neighbors. As the Board of Supervisors, you should be investing in more accessible, affordable housing for our community not using funding from the American Rescue Plan Act to greenlight and further harass and criminalize our unhoused neighbors while taking away their shelter. So please vote no on the anti-camping ordinance." And that is the comment for the whole petition. I encourage you to go through this packet because it has so many passionate comments from community residents and specifically youth, youth of color. And yeah, it's just very, very weird and that you guys are proclaiming, you know, Youth Homeless Month and Can't Drive. Like, months when you have the money, you have the resources and power to use your funds to just give everyone a home. That's all we're asking. So yeah, please consider voting no because these are people. Last week in Delano, there was a body found of our unhoused community members. I'm scared that one day, my brother is going to be walking home and see another body when it could have been prevented if you guys just use your money and resources to provide homes for all. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Marival Serveen. I am a youth organizer with Loud for Tomorrow and a Delano resident and Supervisor Couch's district.
I'm sorry, I did not get your last name, Marival.
Serveen, S E R V I A N.
Thank you.
What's the name of the organization? Loud for Tomorrow. Loud? Loud for Tomorrow. Today, I am here to urge the Board to vote against this anti-camping ordinance. This ordinance is not only inhumane and irresponsible, but it further marginalized a community that needs care, not criminalization. Through the pandemic and even long before, we have seen the harmful and even fatal impact of a lack of access to basic resources and a never-ending cycle of poverty. Just recently, one of our Delano unhoused folks, like Jose mentioned, passed away due to the harshness of houselessness. David Couch, this happened under your watch. If this ordinance is passed today, the Board will be choosing to criminalize and fine our houseless community, and we will not stand by this. Existing and surviving in public should not be a crime. Using county funds to pay for code enforcement and current officers to displace and harass our neighbors instead of funding accessible shelters, transitional housing, and affordable housing, or literally anything else for our county residents is disgusting and needs to be challenged. If this Board claims to care about our unhoused community, I expect for every single one of you to say no to this ordinance, especially you, David Couch. Our leaders have failed our houseless community. As a society, we should not seek to remove them from our site, but focus our efforts on making sure that we have homes for our houseless neighbors so that none of them have to pass away due to preventable reasons. And again, existing and surviving in public should not be a crime. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sherry Smith, S H E R Y, Smith, S M I T H. I live, I've lived in my house for 40 years. I live across from Thompson Jr. High. I go to Patriots Park every day and walk my dogs. While I feel very strongly for these people and their support, Patriots Park is nasty. People stand and poop in front of you. They pee in front of you. It is where I feel safe. I can walk my dogs. My dogs are vaccinated. I'm vaccinated. While I don't care if the people live at the park, what I care about is the unhealthiness. If you're going to go out and talk to them, please teach them about cleanliness. It's unreal. You guys should go out there and walk at 6:30 in the morning. You can smell the poop as you get in the dog walk. And the park seems to think that they can just close the gates to the dog walk, which is not fair to me. I'm 71 years old. It's where I feel safe to go. It's where I feel safe to go. I've lived there 40 years. So I would ask you, please, I don't want to kick the homeless out, they have never been mean to me, but I do feel a little unsafe, and it's very, very unhealthy. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Fabiola Orozco, O-R-O-Z-C-O. I'm in Philip Peters District. We know how the Board of Supervisors will vote today. We have seen very clearly that the Board of Supervisors is not interested in acting in the best interest of the community, and that they will disregard any public comment that was made against the camping, against the anti-camping ordinance. Back in March, the Board heard over 11 hours of public testimony overwhelmingly against the Kern Oil and Gas Ordinance, that would fast-track 40,000 new oil and gas wells with little or no environmental or health oversight. And that's currently being challenged in court. Letizia Perez had the audacity to say that the people providing testimony were uninformed despite testimony from scientists, lawyers, doctors, teachers, and concerned community members. It is clear that the Board will vote to maximize profit and is more than willing to sacrifice their community's well-being in exchange. We have seen a rise in homelessness as a direct result of the pandemic. Back in September 2020, in Kern County alone, there was 24,000 children on the brink of houselessness as their parents dealt with looming eviction notices. As you heard from Riddy earlier, more than 1 in 3, 36% of Kern working households, live below the living wage, experiencing consistent and severe housing and food insecurity. I think you made a comment about Riddy being a paid actor. We're not paid actors. I've never gotten more than 21K a year in my life. How much do you get paid? Don't, please don't interrupt me. This is my time. The Kern County, like, the Kern Board of Supervisors could be using ARPA funds to provide rental, mortgage, and utility assistance to struggling families and individuals. However, in a move that shocks no one, the Board opts to instead criminalize these people, criminalize those in need of public services. The Board would rather escalate-
Could you please bring your comments to a close? We're over the time limit.
Someone went over 10 minutes, so I'm going to just finish what I have to say.
Nobody went over 10 minutes.
Yeah, the first commenter did. And you keep interrupting me, so I'm just going to finish what I have to say, like you asked. So, you would rather give our police officers, who have been consistently listed as one of the most deadly, if not the most deadly in the nation, the green light to harass and endanger the most vulnerable members of our community? Just this past March, California Prison Industry Authority, who exploits the coerced labor, AKA slave labor, of over 7,000 prisoners, was cited and fined by Cal OSHA for serious violations for recklessly exposing the imprisoned population to COVID. The biggest customer of CalPia is CDCR.
Okay, that's been a minute over, so thank you for your comments.
CDCR canceled their rehabilitation programs.
Thank you for your comments.
...from family members.
Okay, if you don't quit, and go sit down, you're going to be removed from the office or from the chambers.
Canceled, but you know what they told you to do?
Can we, okay, I'm sorry, we're going to need to ask you to please leave the chambers. Thank you.
... cents to a dollar an hour. That's slave labor. We are profiting off of slave labor. She's leaving a public comment, this isn't a crime. Get away, go away. What is it, your job? This is your job? It's gross, it's a dumb job. Shut up.
Excuse me, Riddy?
...about that. Just know that I-
Okay, no, no, okay, understood, but you've been asked to leave the chambers, and this individual right here, Riddy Patel, is yelling at these cops and creating a disturbance in here, and I believe you both need to leave the chamber. This is not a productive way to act in a meeting where we're trying to get public comment and have a conversation with the community.
I couldn't provide my public comment, what did I do that disrupted Philip?
You have been-
What did I do that disrupted Philip?
We're not having an argument. You're being disruptive right now.
What are you going to do, drag me out? I would like to leave my public comment.
Yeah.
For what?
The board has reconvened, and I'd like to ask, Madam Clerk, please note that all members are present. Okay, so now we will move forward with public presentation. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Jeff Warren.
Sir, just one moment, sir. I think that microphone is down. Okay, it's on now. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jeff Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N. I'm in Mr. Maggert's district. And when I heard on the radio that this was going on last week, I thought I'd come down and see what was going on. And as a 40-year resident of Kern County, homeowner, 45 years in construction, I'm seeing how our community is dying. You drive down Chester Avenue in the city, they have to put bars up to keep the drug addicts and mentally ill from not living in the entrance to their businesses. Oil dale isn't much better. It is a little bit better. I do commend the way the Sheriff's Department takes care of things the best way they can. I think this ordinance, new ordinance that you're talking about, is a wonderful tool to help our community not to drown in this cesspool. Some of these people are talking about, I mean, certainly poor homeless people. Two years ago, I was hit in the face with a skateboard by someone living out of a shopping cart because I ignored them when they asked for money. And so my compassion is toned down just a little bit. I think we need to do something, and I commend you guys for, the ordinance sounded good, really good, and I am completely for it. And I feel sorry for the show you guys got to put on here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, Chairman Peters and Board members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern. We operate, as you know, the Kern County M Street Navigation Center. We, I believe, run an excellent program there. We're really pleased with the services we're able to provide in partnership with the county departments that are on-site and help us, as well as our other nonprofit partners as well. We're going to have a piece of this in that we're going to open up a portion of the M Street Center for the safe parking and camping area, which will be really interesting. We're ready to start that. We think this is going to be an interesting component to the overall plan we have at the M Street, where we allow people that maybe aren't ready for the institutional setting to come in and camp and park, and then gradually work their way into the center. So we stand ready to provide that service. We're anxious to begin that service and expand the services we offer. And just wanted to stand up here and let you know that we're ready to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Chair, behind this, I'm sorry, through the chair. Thank you. Is that included in this? I wasn't clear about that. I mean, you're going to be able to do it because of this? You won't be able to do it? You currently can do it? What do you, what?
It's part of the overall plan for homelessness that we're working with the county staff on. So it's something, my opinion is, I think we should do it regardless if the ordinance goes through or not. I think it's a great plan. It enables people that maybe aren't ready to enter our formalized setting. Although, we run a low-barrier shelter. There are some people that are hesitant to enter the shelter and would prefer to maybe live out of their car, or live outside at least for a while until they can get into our system and maybe ease their way in.
And learn to trust you.
You learn, we build trust, et cetera. That's our, that's our vision for this area. So it's going to be an area that's not in the formalized M Street Center, as far as they don't have to go through security checks and all that to get in, but it'll be adjacent to it. And it'll be a step towards moving into either our center or maybe even one of the other centers. So what we'll be having is, street teams are out normally, out in the street, and they'll continue to be out in the street. We'll also be addressing those that are in the safe parking and camping area, and working with them to get them into our center or one of the others, or the other centers.
Jeremy, I don't know anybody who's done more anti-poverty work in this community than you, as an actual lifestyle, and as a profession, and as an expertise. Your opinion to me is of the utmost highest, both practically and morally. So I want to tell you, thank you for your competency, your expertise, and what you bring to the table. By any chance, have you seen the documentary out in United States of Tents?
No, I don't think I've seen that documentary.
It's remarkable. It is just stunning, the, the place we are at, and the challenges that are, the very multi-layered, multi-dimensional challenges. And I think there's a combat veteran in there who explains and articulates these issues, in my opinion, better than I've ever heard somebody from the streets, who has experienced homelessness, who's out there, and really doesn't have a lot of reason to trust government, if you will. And it has some real, real, I think, reasonable criticism of where things are. And then, of course, what has worked for him. He's a tiny house guy, but there's, of course, lots of options and availability. But, and in this particular instance, it's permanent for him, but for us, it's more transitional. And I think some of the veterans and veteran stuff is more permanent, too. But nonetheless, one of many tools within our toolbox that we should be looking at as we think about housing unhoused people. I know I've talked to you about this before. My father-in-law is chronically homeless. We've provided him a free home, free food, free internet, free cable, everything you could imagine. And he's adjudicated under the social security system, so he actually gets money every month. And he has opted no less than two dozen times to go back out on the streets than be with his son, his daughter-in-law, and his grandchildren, which is a kind of devastation and heartbreak that there really is no way to describe. It is one of the things that has perplexed me so much, that I've, really, we've devoted so much of our time and energy to try to understand what is going on here, when we are, you know, of course, doing everything in our power to meet that need, and we simply cannot. I mean, find my father-in-law under a bridge today, or in a, in a hotel on Union that he can maybe afford for two weeks, and then back out on the streets. And for whatever reason, I can't judge him. I've stopped doing that, because that doesn't help. And I'm really much more interested in understanding, you know, how do we really meet the need of, of members of our community that are, frankly, you know, checked out. And it's reminiscent for me of my days at the Public Defender's Office, where so many of my clients had subjected their, themselves to the understanding that they were simply doing life on the installment plan. And that mentality is what's dangerous, is when folks have checked out and said, there's no place for me anymore. This society doesn't want me. They, whatever it is, right? I mean, we have to figure out, people in yours and my position, people have devoted a lifetime to this work, are not recent to the game of criticism, but have actually devoted a lifetime to caring about people. Our hardest, our most marginalized. You and I have both done that. I'm proud of that, and that makes me trust you. And I want to thank you for your work, because people like my father-in-law are out there, and we've got to figure it out. And of course, simply criminalizing people, we know, is not a great strategy on the whole, for any arena. But, and I want to say this, too, the, the way in which we do the Veterans Day Stand Down, or has been done in the past, where veterans sign up early, they come up, they come in, they set up, break down, participate in the activity, clean up as a means to do some work in exchange for fines and fees. I really think that needs to be a component of, of what we're doing. I keep getting text messages from Christian, saying, you know, what about the fines? People don't have the money. Fines, fines, fines. So, you know, I promised him I would address it, and I really think we have to look at that, because some work for, for exchange of fines and fees, some kind, you know, incentive, incentivizing coming into the fold with things that really matter to people, like dignity, like housing, right? Like using the restroom and privacy, right? That's a real incentive, I think, for people, to be able to have some sense of privacy. And I think in the end, you know, my father-in-law wants his own privacy. And, you know, that's hard for me, but I have to respect that, that's what he wants. And as a society, we got to figure out, I think, how to do that, and make, you know, close those gaps in a way that's neither, you know, politically appealing because it's political, you know, but a way that's practical, and that answers, you know, the call of so many of our community to please do something. And so, you know, I'm very grateful that you're a part of this conversation, Jeremy.
Thank you, thank you. And I think, you know, the, the parking, safe parking and camping area isn't going to solve all the problems, but I think it's going to be an interesting component of it, and see how that works. And if it's successful, then, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's a sign that, you know, we need to grow that, that area of the, of the M Street Center. So we'll see how it works out, but we're excited to get going on it. We think it's an important component of serving those in need, and we care about all of our clients and those in need in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next public speaker, please?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Viviana, and I'm a resident of Delano.
Pardon me real quick, sir. Can we please just have silence in here while we're having here and couple of comments? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not catch your name.
Yeah, Viviana Camacho, B-I-V-I-A-N-A-C-A-M-A-C-H-O. I'm a resident of Delano, and I'm here to urge you all to not go through with this anti-camping ordinance. As Jose and Maravell mentioned, there was a homeless person who passed in Delano due to lack of resources. And it's really disappointing that, as people in power, you are choosing to use these funds to criminalize our houseless neighbors, which, yeah, again, it's really disappointing. And I think that these funds could be used to providing care and resources, which is what they need. And I know folks keep mentioning about housing strategies, and we can do that without passing this ordinance. We can do that without criminalizing our houseless neighbors. We know, and you know, you can do better, so please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I refer something to Steph? I'd be interested in, and there's no hurry on this, but I'd be interested in making sure that we receive updates on the Delano Navigation Center. And they're having, I would just like to see the reports that, everybody on the board to see the reports that I've been getting from there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caleb Espinoza. I'm with South Kern Soul, and just a few days ago, I did a report on homeless people, and I spoke with three different houseless individuals. And these are the questions I asked them. What are some important needs during your time? Jehovah, the first individual mentioned, a shelter, stability, natural order, somewhere to sleep at night. He's 22. He's pretty young. The next person, Darren R. Armus Senior, he's 56. He said that, food. We hustle every day to get money, so eating is number one. Number two is shelter. They kicked us out of our old spots around the corner, so we can't stay there anymore. And the last person referred, preferred to stay anonymous. He was, he seemed to be in his 50s. He said food, shelter, and everything. The next question, have you heard about the Kern County Board of Supervisors' decision to hear a proposal for an ordinance that would make it illegal to camp on public property and within 500 feet of public schools or libraries? Jehovah responded with, so they're making it illegal to stay at a spot? They're restricting, they are restricting freedom. Darren R. Armus Senior, 56, said, yes, I heard about it. I think it's ridiculous. I had a business before being homeless, and now I'm going to be a criminal? The last person, who still referred to stay anonymous, said, it should not be set. It is inhumane. The third question was, what has kept you away from a shelter? Jehovah, first response, said, I don't like how controlling they are. They get crowded, too, and with all the stuff going around, I shouldn't be near it. Darren R. Armus Senior, 56, he said, a bunch of people in one spot. They call them concentration camps. I know they aren't that, but that's what some people say. Also, they don't let pets, while some shelters say they do, but ones we went to didn't let us. My criminal, the last person said, my criminal record, and we want to stay together. He was with around three other people, and two of them were my age, which was pretty depressing. I'm only 19. The last and final question was, what message would you send to local decision-makers? Jehovah said, and I see a very difficult way to live. Darren R. Armus Senior said, come out here and stay with me for a week. Let me show you, because the way they treat us isn't how people should be treated. And the last person said, I don't know, why would they help me? And that's all. I didn't expect to make a comment, but I just wanted to mention all of this.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Yeah, my name's Don Sims, and I'm here to support it. I'm hoping it will give law enforcement another tool to deal with some of the actual criminals that are on the street, that are in the camps. Because in my particular area, which is the Newton Olive Drive area, they're drug addicts, they're thieves. They come through our neighborhoods, doing everything they can get. And every time I have to deal with law enforcement, they say there's nothing they can do. They can't check them for warrants, they can't check them for stolen property, they can't check them for drugs or anything. Their hands are tied. So I'm hoping that this ordinance would give them the tool to go in and be proactive, as opposed to responding.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we will now bring it back to the board for discussion. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Alsa.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to ask Mr. Zerfus to go back to, come back to the podium. And I thought it'd be helpful for, to specifically address the, the funding issues. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding by members of the public about what's being spent here. They're talking about $8 million. That $8 million is being spent on additional alternative housing, additional mental health programs, et cetera. But I'd like Mr. Zerfus to really try and clarify that for everybody.
Thank you for the opportunity. The, the $8.3 million price tag, which was rescinded at the October 12th meeting, is specifically tied primarily to the behavioral health investment. So funding those co-response teams, funding the additional MET teams, the extra conservator that's being added in order to support those efforts, as well as the rapid response teams. So the ones that are actually going to go out, both from Public Works and General Services, and engage the homeless members in the encampments, in order to, to work with them and connect them to, to the service providers and to shelter. So the, the actual drafting of the ordinance and enacting of the ordinance itself is, the cost to do that is very nominal, fairly nominal. It's, it's a lot of staff time, but, but we are already, you know, our, our time is already paid for by the county and, and other funds, primarily the general fund between county council and the CAO's office. So, so the actual work on the ordinance is separate, that the $8.3 million number, and that's really just those certain components. If you look back at that October 12th staff board letter and presentation, there were several that, that the costs were yet to be determined. So when we talk about the safe parking and camping that you heard from Mr. Tobias, that we're working on him, we are getting that, getting those costs together now, and we'll be back before your board to make a presentation on that, in order to enter into a contract and, and kind of expand those scope of services. So they'll be in number. That's not included in the $8.3 million. So that was really the items we knew at the time, primarily the behavioral health and co-response teams, and then the rapid response teams in, in dealing with those encampments. So, any, any other questions on, on the funding components?
Any, any other questions?
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zerfus.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan, can we, I don't know if we have to do this now, but the fines issue that my staff is obsessing over right now, can, can, is there something we can do about that? People don't have money if they're homeless. I mean, that's so obvious. So, you know, what, what is the infrastructure for that, Jim? And is that something we can think about, maybe devote some time to? We don't have to do it now. But I, like I said, the system that we did, that we have done for Veteran Stand Down, with people doing some work, but not having it be physical money, of which, you know, very few people have anymore, period.
We can certainly look into that. This ordinance really isn't about the penalty. It's, it's, I mean, an administrative citation, which is kind of what this is. That's a typical amount that would be, you know, for a violation of a, an ordinance.
Which tends to be a lot, Jim.
It is. And I'm not, and I'm not minimizing that. But that's really not the point of the ordinance. The point of the ordinance is to disrupt behavior, to be able to go in and engage with people, and to, to abate the, the health and public safety hazards in these encampments. So it's the tool to be able to make contact and to deal with those. I don't frankly anticipate a lot of, of actual citations being issued, but we can certainly look at alternative ways to, you know, to satisfy that. And we can maybe get creative on that. And but, but really, that's, the, the goal is to, and really, it's a, the tool isn't the fine. The tool is the ability to go out and engage and work with the individuals.
Jeremy, thank you so much, Jim, for that thorough answer. I want to talk about, don't bother getting up, but I really want to be creative about that, because I think there's lots of ways to incentivize folks getting closer and closer into a place where they feel safe, that they can trust the people that have, that are around them. You know, I think we can do that in increments that help us build a stronger society by letting folks kind of move at their pace, but, but, you know, using an incentive, the incentive of the fines. I mean, I've seen it work brilliantly through the Veteran Stand Down. And it's the one day of the year the DA and the public defender come together. They agree that these veterans deserve and have earned a different kind of path. That's different than here, of course. We're dealing with a great societal need of which we do not address. It is, you know, it's second world status time for the United States, is my opinion. And that is just horrifying to even consider. But, but with that said, sorry.
I, I think Margot wanted to jump in, and, or, excuse me, our county council and share some information on that as well.
So maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. But if we could just try to be creative here as we move forward, and we're not going to resolve it today, but it works so well at the Veteran Stand Down, and ways to incentivize folks, they do not have money, I think, piling fines on people in this condition. It, it really is just asinine. So I don't need a response right now. I just want to know that we're working on that. You know, that's all.
Excuse me, Ms. Rozan.
Thank you. I just wanted to, to point out that in the ordinance that is being considered under the penalty section, it does say, any person who violates this section may also be subject to an administrative penalty under Ordinance Code 8.54. So it is a discretionary...
It's not shell.
It is, it's may. So that provides, it provides for discretion.
Thank you very much. And really, I appreciate it. I just think incentivizing behavior, right? I mean, nobody deserves a pass for bad behavior across the board. But when we are thinking about getting us to a better state in this community, you know, it makes sense. Really, to everyone here, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrubner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a follow-up question for that, to that, Madam Counsel. Those, since those are administrative fines, those are appealable to the Board of Supervisors, is that correct?
Correct. It's, let me pull this. That's correct. It's under the Ordinance Code, and they are appealable, the same way that...
Fireworks, or any of those kinds of violations. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I was, I was waiting for Supervisor Maggert to punch me before I asked my question, because I know that he was the impetus for this. So I'll, I'll defer to him, and then I'd like to ask my question.
Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Scrubner. We've discussed this at length at previous meetings, so I'm not going to go on and on about that. about that. But I wanted to mention that Carlos Beldivinos, who is the Executive Director of the mission at Kern, was here earlier. He had to leave for another responsibility that he had this morning, but he authorized me to express on his behalf that he fully supports the ordinance and the effort that we're trying to do. So, I'm heartened by the level of support that we have from all of the service providers to the homeless. And while I am respectful of and, you know, acknowledge the concerns that others have that this may be harmful to people, I think it is much, much more harmful to people and inhumane of us to do nothing. And this is one, this ordinance is one in a whole series, a whole continuum of efforts on our part to do something particularly for the mentally ill and the addicted, that hopefully we can get them to a place they can make good decisions and move their lives on beyond homelessness. So, with that in mind, I would thank staff for their help and make a motion that we... Ms. Razan, do I need to read the entire motion? Is that important? The entire staff recommendation?
That would be better.
Okay, then, I would make a finding, the motion is to make a finding that the ordinance is not subject to the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline 15061B3, and if determined to be a project, it is exempt from further SEQA review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15308 and 15321 to waive reading and to enact the ordinance.
I'll second the motion. If I may be recognized, ask my question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Zerfus, would you come up to the podium? I wanted to just ask a question prompted by one of the comments made by a speaker from the public that opposes the ordinance. When we discussed this at our last, it wasn't our last meeting, but it was the first time that we discussed this ordinance, and we scheduled today, there was some mention by staff, and then I asked a follow-up question in regard to this ordinance and its application in the outlying areas. I believe that, just to paraphrase what staff said, "We're going to start in the metro area. We're going to refine our approach. We're going to see how it works, what works, what doesn't, what we may need to change." And then this would be, could be, and would be expanded into the outlying areas. One of the comments today that I wanted to be addressed is that this will drive people from the metro area out to the outlying areas and create a problem. I don't want folks in the outlying areas to believe that that will be the case, and so I'd like to know, what is our plan as far as application of this initially, and how then this will be expanded in the outlying areas? Because I can tell you, there's homelessness as far as, far away as Boron, Taft on the other end of the county, and all points in between.
So, let me, I guess, address it this way. The city of Bakersfield's ordinance, as I understand it, is, already has similar enforcement provisions that we're talking about. In fact, you see their rapid response teams. You can, you know, put in an encampment in your app on your phone, and, you know, they go through some notice process, and they actually follow a very similar process as to what we're talking about in the city of Bakersfield. And I haven't heard, doesn't mean doesn't exist, the big problem in pushing those folks to outlying areas. And they've been doing this for some time now. So, I think that we have some experience to look back on to say, you know, we haven't seen that occurring in the past. If we do, we'll certainly respond and have to adjust so that that's not, that's not happening. But typically, folks, you know, stay in the community that they're in. So, they may be relocating, but to relocate from Bakersfield to Taft, be as a homeless person, you know, where you don't maybe have your network and resources available that you've developed in Bakersfield, you know, that would probably be a stretch. And we just haven't seen that happening as the city's been actively enforcing a similar type of ordinance for some time now. Now, the second part of your question, you know, how are we going to roll this out countywide? You're accurate in your recollection of our discussion on the 12th. That is the plan, is to start here, get our rapid response teams up and running, both General Services and the code enforcement teams. Work first in the metro area and then expand out into the outlying areas because we do have homeless issues in, you know, unincorporated areas in the county and near other municipalities. So, we'll be coordinating and trying to work with the Homeless Collaborative to understand where those hotspots are, and frankly, we can talk with other municipalities and get their feedback, and then probably start with some targeted enforcement to go out and hit certain communities and make those contacts, and then expand from there.
Thank you for that response. Also, something I recollect from our discussion is that we talked about regular updates to the board on our progress and where we see we're finding success and where we need to make adjustments. And so, I certainly would like to reiterate my desire to have those updates regularly, if not quarterly, even, you know, with more frequency than that. I think quarterly would, it sounds like it should be fine, but we'll see how it goes. But in the scope of those updates, I'd like us to continue to keep the outlying areas in front of mind.
Understood.
Thank you. And I think that, Clerk, did you record my second on Supervisor Margaret's motion?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
To the Chair, to the CAO, and your team, Jim, in particular, Amanda, who I know is, you know, obsessed about these issues and always looking for best practices and best opportunities, really want to say thank you. Anna and everybody's input, I really appreciate it. These are hard issues. And I, for all these, the folks that are opposed to it, I want to thank you, too, for being here, and thank you for caring about homeless people, because there really aren't a lot of people who do. And while we have some pretty profound differences about how government, what it can actually do and what makes sense, I really respect your passion, and I respect your care and love for people that you don't know. I think that's totally legit, and that's a beautiful part of, you know, the American spirit that's driving this here, which says, "We can come together and do things better." We can. And you all remind me very much of myself 20 years ago, and I really respect you. And if you're interested in learning more about how things really get done, I'm more than happy to spend time with you. If you're interested, if you're not, that's okay, too. I surely would love to see you take your passion up to the Capitol and talk to the folks that are in charge there about why it is so difficult to build housing in California, about why it is so slow, so cumbersome, so extensive, and so expensive. And I'll wave to your camera there. And send my love, too, because I love Kern County, too. I've been fighting it out here for a long time. And I'll tell you, the things that are going on up there are really harming us here. And you're directing your energy here because it's easy, or you haven't really been told the truth about how it works. And it is beyond heartbreaking for me because I see that passion, I see that creativity, I see that devotion, and I think you could really put it towards making a real change. And I hope that you figure that out. Thank you.
Calling our CAO real quick, Ryan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Supervisor Perez, for everything you've said. I just wanted to point out, I wanted to thank my, from my office to Ms. Razan and County Counsel for all of their hard work, her entire team, Mr. Van Wyck. I know there are others that worked on this ordinance. It was quite a heavy lift, and they were very, it was a lot of work, and it was a lot of detail and a lot of homework research, and we just appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, all our staff that have worked on this. I just wanted to share a few thoughts myself real quick. You know, we were spoken to earlier about somebody who was quoting the Bible to the board and a bunch of other stuff, and, you know, I'm a Christian myself, I'm Catholic, and as a Catholic, I believe in the dignity of every human life, every single person. And I think that we owe the people that we serve something better than being content to let them live on the streets. I think that supporting our Navigation Center, supporting our homeless shelters, supporting people that are providing services is the direction we need to be going. And this ordinance isn't even enforceable. It has, it says it right in the ordinance, if we don't have space, if we don't have beds, if we don't have the resources to provide. So, we're not talking about, you know, this forced policing, any of this, this stuff that we've been hearing. We're just trying to get people into access the resources, the medical resources, the food, the shelter, that will allow them to transition to something better. And I think our homeless deserve that. I think our citizens deserve to be able to enjoy their parks and their public resources without worrying about, you know, stepping on needles out in the park like we heard from somebody, or people defecating in front of them. I think that we and our community deserves better than that. So, I commend our staff and everybody that's worked on putting this ordinance together. And that's all I had to say on it. Is there any other comments from the board before we vote? Okay, and we have a motion in a second, so everybody, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Okay, having no more items to consider, an open session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to consider items 37 and 38 under the CAO's office, as well as items 40 and 41 under County Counsel. So, move. Thank you. With that objection, we are adjourned in memory of Ida Perkins.